Good evening. My name is Vince Noblet and today is January the 10th, 2022. It is 7:00 PM. Calling this meeting to order. First on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everybody please rise and say your Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Next on the agenda is the approval of President and Vice President of the Town Council for 2022.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a nomination that we reelect you, Mr. Vince Noblet, as President of the Council for 2022, and also reelect Gary Rakes as Vice President of the Town Council for 2022.
I'd move, not hearing any others, I'd move that we close nominations.
Okay.
Oh, second.
Second?
Yep.
Okay. Got a motion in second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Three, one. Okay. Next on the agenda is the minutes, approval of the minutes for December 20th, 2021 meeting. These minutes have been distributed to the council and reviewed. Any comments, questions? Hearing done, I'll call for the approval of the motions as presented to the council.
Yeah, Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay. So I'll call for a motion, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Next on the agenda is the recognition of service retiring wastewater superintendent, Norm Berry.
Mr. Berry, would you come to the podium, please, and bring your lovely wife Brenda? It is Brenda, correct?
That's correct. That you got it right.
Me too. Well, Norm, as we just talked here a few minutes ago, you and I only spent a relatively short amount of time together, a little bit of more than a year, but it's been a fantastic pleasure to know you, and even more than that, to be around the fantastic amount of knowledge that you have concerning wastewater. Landfill closures, I mean, the list goes on. So with that being said, I want to present you with a proclamation honoring Mr. Norm Berry, wastewater superintendent for the town of Speedway. Whereas Norman Berry has dedicated 30 years to the town of Speedway and has spent that time as the superintendent at the wastewater treatment plant. And whereas Norm has served the residents and customers of the town with great professionalism, technical expertise and integrity in a field which requires attention to detail and a deep respect for the environment. And whereas Norm has been a great asset to the town and will be greatly missed. And whereas the citizens of the town of Speedway and the Speedway Town Council wish to express their sincere gratitude and appreciation for all those years of service to the town of Speedway, Indiana, and his continued commitment to our community, the state of Indiana, and the United States of America. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Speedway Town Council does hereby proclaim the 11th day of January, 2022, as Norm Berry Day in the town of Speedway and encourages residents of Speedway to celebrate his dedication and hard work in our town as he begins his retirement, adopted this 10th day of January, 2022. Norm, would you come up to the desk, please?
Actually, you want to go out there and we'll get a picture?
Oh, yeah, let me come out there. Present you with this plaque?
Here. There you go. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Would you like to come over?
Yeah.
Put you on this other side over here. Put the ugly guy in the note. And this is your, you hold on to that.
Nice.
Well, thank you very much. I gotta say, it's been one heck of a ride, a water ride now. I just wanted to say a few things. I've had the opportunity to be a part of a lot of the projects and improvements in the town of Speedway for the last 30 years, from three plant improvement projects to CSO, long-term control plan, Gerard Allison Storm Relief Project, Main Street, the sewer separation there, which we couldn't have, the Main Street we have unless we've taken care of the infrastructure in Main Street also. So it's been a great opportunity and a pleasure just for me to be a part of that, but I didn't do it by myself. I've had a lot of help along the way. I've had the pleasure of working with a lot of different professionals, starting with that 1991 council that actually saw something in me to give me an opportunity to give me a chance. To this town council that has supported me all these years to help provide the resources that we need. We can't do anything, we can't do what we do down there if we don't have the resources. And we owe that to all of you for seeing the vision and seeing the needs that we need and answering that call. So I thank you for that. All these department heads that I've worked with, great department heads, I've mentioned, I mentioned in the last department head meeting, a lot of places, the chief of police or the fire chief wouldn't even know your name, let alone cut up with you and acknowledge you and all that. So to all the water superintendents I've worked with, but most of all, the silent heroes, the employees down at the treatment plant, that day in and day out do their best to make sure that that plant runs the best it can and that we put out the best product that we can and that we protect our environment. So I started this journey 47 years ago. So the wastewater treatment profession is a wonderful profession. It's done wonders for me. But so if there's anybody out there that has an interest in the environment, particularly the water environment, please seek it out. It did wonders for me and you won't regret it. So again, thank you very much to everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Norm.
Don't go anywhere. Hey, Norm.
Norm.
Norm, Norm, don't go anywhere, please. Just, I'm sure all the counselors want to say something, and I certainly do. I think I met you 47 years ago when I was just, you know, a little pup.
I wonder if you remember.
Working in the Parks Department. Okay. No, I don't know when we first met. I talked to you the other day about it. I think I was on Parks Board a long time ago, and that was one of the first opportunities I had to meet you and see what you were doing with your staff. It had nothing to do with Parks at the time, we were doing other things, but I've just watched you all these years. And there's so many great things that we can say about you, but your staff, as you described, the folks that you've been training all these years to come up behind you and take over, as they're doing, says everything, not to mention the respect you have from everybody in every department in this town. And just on a personal level, I really enjoyed working with you and hope that we can find a way to stay in touch, but certainly hope you get to enjoy retirement and everything that it is for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to, you know, wish you all the best. I know, working with you the last 12, 13 years or so, the biggest one was the separation there on Allison and, you know, seeing your, how you really grew and made that happen for us. And then the other one was the Main Street, you know, and how your knowledge in regards to what we needed to do for our town to make that a better, better place. So thank you for all of that. Wish you the best in your retirement. Hope you enjoy it. And, you know, the one thing I'll always remember is just your humor that you would bring to the meetings here. So that was, will be missed for sure. So, thank you.
We didn't know that that was part of the training for the next.
That was that part of the training?
It was coming, he's got to have a full replacement. Norm, I just want to say again, thank you from the town of Speedway. The insight then and the knowledge that you have acquired over the years is invaluable to the town of Speedway. And just like I said on what I only say, the fact is that Main Street had to be a challenge, especially when you're digging holes down that deep and you don't, you don't have really a chance. And you got a lot of people that are upset because we are doing that. And so that had to be very difficult in planning. But again, it's, the results are testimonial to you carrying that project through. And we wouldn't be where we're at today without your knowledge and what you brought to the, to the whole town in terms of a team effort and getting it done. I think it's always that case is when, that you least recognize those people that are quiet and get the work done. And, and basically, you weren't that quiet, but you got the work done. And so I think that that is a pleasure, you know, just seeing you work and to get all those accomplishments is important. Anybody else? Jacob?
Yeah, yeah, Norm, it's been great working with you. Since I started as, day one as town manager, you've been a huge source of knowledge. And it's, it's just, I think it's, I want the public to understand how much you've cared about that plant and the processes. You take it very personally, sometimes almost too personally, when things aren't going well and the bugs aren't doing what we need them to do. But it's, it's hard to overstate your knowledge of both that plant and the entire operation, the process and how it works. And your interest in it and the way you share it is just, it's contagious. And it really got me interested in the process as well and all the details. But I think just more than anything, it's impressive to have anybody care about their profession, what they're doing, regardless of what it is. And I think you had an expression, you would say, we had several expressions that I won't repeat here, but there's one I think we can. It's, you say, we're end of the line, out of sight and out of mind. And I think some people do think that, you know, don't really think a whole lot about what happens when you, when water goes down the drain, you flush the toilet. But treating that and doing it responsibly is so critical to the quality of life that we all enjoy. And we don't really realize it or see it, but you know how important it is. And you've taken it so seriously and you've just been a huge asset to this community. And I appreciate you and your professionalism as someone, a part of our team, but I also am going to miss you personally. So thank you, Norm, for your service to the town.
Thank you. Now, you mentioned, you know, I took things a little too personal or get too fired up. But I owe my wife a lot about that. She, when things were going great, I could bounce them off of her and celebrate, and she would celebrate with me. And when things were going bad, I could come home with some pretty bad moods. So, so she'd bring me back to earth real quick. But thank you very much.
Yeah. On that note, if you get bored in retirement, or Brenda, if he, you know, is underfoot and you need to do something with him a couple of days a week, Rob can use a yard waste truck driver. Just throwing that out there.
Well, I just, I've only known you for six months, Norm. I'm not as privileged as everyone else here who's worked with you for so many years. But I think if there's three things I could say with you about you, is I know you cared about your job, I know you cared about your people, and I could tell your parents raised you right. So I really appreciate who you are, and I think we are going to miss you desperately. We have faith in Brad Sloan, but we will miss you, Norm.
Well, thank you.
Anything else? Well, thank you, Norm.
Thanks again for everything.
Don't be a stranger.
I won't.
All right. Okay. Next on the agenda is the recognition of service for retiring Police Chief Jim Campbell. Sounds like we're losing a lot of experience and knowledge, and we are beginning of the year. I'll go ahead and read this proclamation honoring Jim Campbell, Police Chief for the town of Speedway. Whereas Jim Campbell has dedicated 11 years to the town of Speedway and spent his time as Speedway's Police Chief. Whereas Jim has been a great asset to the town and will be greatly missed. And whereas the citizens of the town of Speedway and the Speedway Town Council wishes to express their sincere gratitude and appreciation for Jim's 11 years of service to the town Speedway Police Department and the town of Speedway in a lifetime of commitment to our community and the state of Indiana and the United States of America. And therefore, let's, let it be resolved that Speedway Town Council does hereby proclaim the 12th day of January, 2022, as Jim Campbell Day in the town of Speedway and encourages residents of the Speedway to celebrate his dedication and hard work, the town, as he began his retirement. I just want to say that, you know, I, Jim was unable to make it tonight, but he's definitely in our thoughts. And I think Jim has, in the last years, demonstrated his dedication to the town of Speedway in many ways, and the leadership that he brought together at our police department. And I'm sure that Assistant Chief Chekovscherz will add to that. And I don't know if anybody wants to say anything specifically about Jim at this time.
I can just tell you that Chief Campbell ceremonies and an event like this is just not him. He's a humble man, and he did not want any ceremonies. And he committed to his service here with the town. And when he decided that he wanted to retire, he wanted to retire, and he didn't want any ceremonies. And I appreciate, and I'm sure he does appreciate the proclamation. But this is just not him, and he just did not want to come. And he loves the town, and he loves the people, and he loves the people from the police department, but it's just not his style to come and, and accept the proclamation. So.
Totally understand.
Yes.
And I appreciate that. And I think Jim brought, again, a lot of history and knowledge of, from his past work as safety director at IMS.
He did, yes.
And also his position at the Indianapolis Police Department.
Yes, he did. I've worked with Chief Campbell, starting back when he became the Director of Public Safety at the Motor Speedway. And I worked with him 10 years there, and I've worked with him the last 11 years here. He's an amazing man, very wise. He was dedicated to the town, and he very rarely took a day off. Very, once a year, he'd take a vacation, but that's the only time you saw Jim really not be at the office. And I think he's just ready to retire and ready to enjoy the rest of his life. So.
Well, that's good to hear.
Yes.
I'll just make a comment. We've, we've talked about it already, Chuck.
Yes.
Jim's a great man.
He is, yes.
Similar to the way that, that our town manager described earlier, just the integrity that, that Chief Campbell carried with him every day.
Yes.
And the way that he treated staff, the way he treated other coworkers, department leaders, et cetera, the rest of us as elected leaders and servants. And it's his prerogative to simply retire quietly.
Yes.
And we respect that.
Yes.
We also want to honor him as we're doing here.
Yes.
But I think it's, to be clear, you know, he let us know some time ago, and this is not unusual for someone in public safety to say, I'll go quietly.
Yes.
And I think some of that is continuing to, to protect and serve, and that's why they're there. And I just, I have wonderful thoughts for Jim, and I'm sure he's going to be happy in retirement. I know family is also critically important to him.
Yes.
And he'll, he'll enjoy that. So just, if he happens to watch this, which I'm guessing he won't, he's been at plenty of town council meetings.
Probably not.
But if word gets back to him that, just the thanks that I have as a counselor that learned a lot from a person that had 40-plus years in his career.
And I think that's the best way to describe it. He just wants to go quietly.
Yeah.
So.
Eileen, I know you worked with him for a long time.
Oh, yeah, definitely. And just really the same thoughts of what, you know, everyone has expressed here. You know, the one thing I thought, you know, I was, there was one day I was driving down Crawfordville Road, and I saw a police officer pull somebody over. And I looked, I had to take a double take because it was Jim getting out of his car that pulled somebody over. And I was going, what, really? He just did that? You know? And I thought, hey, he's got the right, you know? So, but obviously, there's a couple of other officers right behind him, you know, I'm sure they took over. But it just showed to prove that, you know, it didn't matter what seat he sat in.
Yes.
He still did the job, you know?
Yes, yes.
And you have to acknowledge that.
Yes.
All the work.
We will miss him.
And what he put into town.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
Just wish him the best in retirement.
Yeah, I will pass those all.
I'm going to miss those.
The chief.
Short, private conversations that he and I had.
I had one of those every morning. For the last 11 years. Thank you.
Great. Appreciate, thank you, Chuck.
Thank you very much.
For speaking. Okay, next on the agenda is ordinance number 1354, an ordinance amending Speedway Town Code and establishing a schedule of rate and charges collected by the town of Speedway, Indiana, from the owner and property served by the Sewage and Water Works of the town of Speedway. Grant, I suppose you can.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So the ordinance on the agenda this evening, it has been a long time in the making. Staff and council over the past year have been meeting with different advisors, department heads, reviewing needs at the water and wastewater plant, as well as our system, and what we needed to do to upgrade, reinvest in, and keep it working properly, to the level that has, it has become expected here in Speedway. And we do deserve to, to make the best water and treat our wastewater so that our environment is protected. So this evening, we are looking at first reading for this ordinance that increases the sewer and water rates. To start this out, we have about a four-and-a-half-minute video that has been produced over the past three or four months. I know it was warmer weather when we started it. So Brian, if you could show that video, please? The town of Speedway takes a lot of pride in the provision of water and wastewater services to our residents. Part of the problem, though, is that those facilities are starting to age.
Surface water plant was constructed in 1964. The groundwater plant was constructed in 1972.
The original plant was in 1954. So the next expansion or the next project was in 1970. And we do still have equipment that was installed in 1970.
Just trying to make everything last as long as it can, you know, squeezing every last bit of life out of, out of every piece of equipment, whether it's, it's a pump or a truck or whatever it is, just to try to operate it as efficiently as we can.
We've got a lot of pretty antiquated equipment. So we really need to get this upgraded. And so we're experiencing more issues sometimes when equipment goes down. It can affect other processes to the point where it takes a while to get back to normal operation.
Constantly having to shut the plant down because we have concrete that's dropping into our basin and not allowing our sludge to drain because we're getting hung up on concrete chunks. High-service pumps over there at the groundwater plant need updated, and it would help us if we did get them updated because we, you know, oftentimes, they just have to simply turn on. Been in service for so long, parts form have become obsolete, or people to work on them, you just can't find them, to where it needs to be re-engineered and reconstructed.
We don't really have enough money to make the investments in our capital and, and all the infrastructure that we need to do long-term.
As regulations evolve, so do the treatment plants have to evolve. And so they have, they have to upgrade and install processes that can meet those limits.
At Sewer, we were able to release a lot of funds from the refinancing that we did of all the sewer debt in 2020. So with those funds, plus the rate increase, we anticipate being able to fund everything with cash and not have an issue debt. So at Water, we're looking at funding with certainly the cash on hand that we have. And we're also looking at using a lot of the ARP funds, the federal ARP funds. We're allowed to invest that in sewer and water infrastructure. So we're going to use that to offset the increase that would be needed.
We want to increase production here at the plant, increase what these filters can maintain, reconstruct our basins, get some more efficient mechanical components.
For a typical Speedway resident, so that's 4,000 gallons or less, that, that person's water bill is probably looking at about a $10 increase. And then at Sewer, again, same Speedway resident, 4,000 gallon customer, they're, they're going to see about a $5 increase per month. If the increase is approved, our new water rate would put us in the middle of the pack in central Indiana. If the sewer rate is approved, we would go to third lowest, still an enviable position.
It is a public health issue. So in order to protect public health, you have to meet these certain limits and treat the water to the point where it's, it's not a hazard, a public health hazard.
So without investing in our infrastructure, we risk not being able to properly treat our drinking water or make sure that the wastewater released in the environment is also pure.
It's important to process the surface water to ensure the safety of the water consumption and ensure that it is aesthetically pleasing to our customers. We've got fertilizers, we've got, you know, animal feces, stuff that runs off into the creek. We've got fish, we've got everything that lives in the creek. There's more, more hazards in the water that need to be treated and zapped before we can consider it potable.
And we have to plan. We really don't have a choice at this point.
Something that, that we want to take care of. It's a, water's a vital function. Everybody needs it. And, you know, it's, it's kind of helpful that we have control over that, that resource in the town.
The main reason we do what we do is to protect the environment and to protect water quality, not only for us, but for our generations to come.
Thank you, Brian. So at this point, we have several guests that we're going to have come up first, and I'm going to forego the, the last names. I'm just going to say Gretchen and Dylan, if you would come up from Westler. They're going to talk about the water and the sewer capital improvement plans. And then we'll have folks from Baker Tilly, Jessica, I believe, is, is going to discuss the structure of the rate and how it was calculated in some ways. So Dylan and Gretchen will, will give you the podium. I know they also have a PowerPoint prepared that we'll show as we, we go along.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I appreciate the opportunity to, to go over this with you, and very good video. I appreciate the opportunity to go over this with you and very good video, so that's very helpful. And so Bridgette and I are with Westler Engineering. My name's Dylan Lamvermont. And so we've got a slideshow, I think he'll pop that up, but over the last year, we've been working with department heads, working with council to look at both the water system and the wastewater system. So I want to spend about 20 minutes today with Bridgette just giving some of the technical underlying foundation for what needs to happen with these two utilities. So we did a capital improvements plan and the first part of it, if you can go to the next slide, I'll spend talking about the water portion, then I'll turn it over to Bridgette and she'll talk about wastewater. And then we hope to answer any questions that you guys have too, so. But just in terms of content, you know, these systems are complicated. You know, Norm and the superintendents know how to run them, so we're just going to give a general overview of the big pieces and really just try to lay out what the current situation is, both in terms of condition and capacity, but we're not just looking at today. This was a 20-year planning document, so we wanted to look not just today, but in the future to see what regulations or improvements need to be made to make sure you guys are planning for the future over that 20-year planning period. And then what are the capital improvements that need to go in in terms of priorities now and over that 20-year period? So that's the general content for today. So on the groundwater side, here's a map of your water system. So we've got a pipe network that gets the water from the treatment plant to the customers. There are a lot of components to this system. You have 13 groundwater wells, primarily located along Eagle Creek. Those wells all pump together and go to the groundwater plant, which is located there on 10th Street. Now that plant has a capacity of 6.5 million gallons per day. It could produce and treat that much water. Unfortunately, because of limitations with certain pieces of the process, primarily the wells, it can only operate at about half that. And then when you have drought conditions, and they do occur, that significantly impacts this part of the system. So when it's dry, which is also when you have some big events here in town, the aquifer just can't keep up and the capacity of that groundwater system is further reduced. So you need another source of water to be able to keep up on those heavy use days and that's your surface water treatment plant. So it's located on the same site, pulls water from Eagle Creek, and it's got a capacity supplement of initial 3 million gallons per day. So, big picture standpoint, that's where your water comes from and the two treatment facilities that it goes through. Next slide, please. So how do we tackle this? We like to be methodical and we, so as part of this, we did what's called an asset management evaluation, both for the water system and the wastewater system. So we looked at every asset or every piece of the system that has a replacement value of $5,000 or more and we rated it. We looked at two main criteria. One is what's the probability that it's going to fail? So how likely is it that it's going to break? But also, what's the consequence of failure? So if it does break, how big of a problem is it? So as you can see on the screen, there's a bunch of different subcategories to look at that. So probability of failure, it really makes sense. One of the categories is how old is it? Or what's been the repair history? Is this something that continually breaks? So those are the types of categories that we looked at and rated it. And then consequence of failure, you know, how much is it going to cost to replace it if it breaks? Is it going to be a safety issue? Is it a regulatory compliance issue? How many people are going to be affected of your customers should this water main break or should this sewer fail? Okay, so those are the ways that we wanted to drill down on this to make sure. And then you put those two pieces together and we come up with the combined risk score per asset. So that's really generally the process that we went through. Next slide, please. This is just a general picture of your water process assets. So this is the wells and the plants. It's not intended to show any drill detail, but I think just a trend. Green's good, red is bad, okay? The dots are the assets and where they score. So generally speaking, you're in pretty good shape, okay? Most of the scoring is in the green area, so lower risk, but we were able to then identify, okay, these are the assets that need the investment from a capital standpoint because they are at a higher risk up towards the top right in the high or even the severe category. So this is just an overview to illustrate the distribution of assets and how they scored. Next slide, please. Pictures are worth a thousand words. So that video was great, you know, we like to show these things because it helps to get the message. The pieces are old, they still work, the guys do a great job keeping them going, but at a certain point in time, that part's no longer available. Or if somebody that knows how to work on this motor, you know, that expertise just doesn't live anymore. So over time, they need to be replaced, they reach the end of their useful life. So from your well standpoint, these are some pictures of where the water comes from out of the ground. Not just the wells themselves, which you can't see because they're down below gray, but all the pieces above, the buildings that surround these things, they all need attention so they can continue to serve the community in a reliable fashion. Next slide, please. So for the surface water system, I mean, it all starts with the creek and there's a low-head dam, a concrete dam, which helps create the pool for the water to come from, you know. The concrete around the edges is starting to erode, there's some bank erosion, and that's just an example of something that needs attention because if that fails, that's a big consequence of failure. You do have some new pieces. In 2010, there was a significant upgrade made to the surface water plant related to some regulations, and that's the intake on the right. So it's not just all old pieces, there has been investments made in these systems over the years, most recently with the 2010 project. Next slide, please. So just kind of stepping into the plant, these are the basins and the filters and the pipe galleries. As they showed in the video earlier, 1960 construction, concrete's getting old, it's starting to deteriorate, and it needs attention before it continues to deteriorate. It's preventative maintenance before things go too far. There's steel rebar inside those walls that if they get exposed to moisture, then the problem just kind of compounds, so. And then moving to the next slide is the groundwater plant. Coatings are very important in these types of systems. You want to protect the steel or the ductile iron so they don't corrode. So these are just some illustrations of the groundwater plant. There's the block wall there that is in probably very poor shape, it's just a visual screen, but then on to the filter vessels and some of the piping inside. It doesn't do it justice there in the picture, but there's been a lot of leaks on those steel piping in that groundwater plant that just have been patched together and field supplies been painted over. They've done a very good job at keeping the thing going, but it's really time to probably look at some wholesale improvements. Next slide, please. The town has three water storage tanks. One is not as easy to see, they're, the ground tank that's located on the same side as the two plants, and then there's your two visible icons, the elevated tank across from the track and then the elevated tank up at Metalwood Park. Quite a bit of storage between those three, about 3 million gallons of storage that can be achieved with those. Next slide, please. So we looked at pictures of stuff that you can't see, there's a bunch of stuff you can't see underneath the ground, underneath the roads and underneath the sidewalks with your water mains and your valves. So from a consequence of failure standpoint, it's the main trunk lines that are the big issue because they have the bigger diameter that carry the water across the system. So if they fail, it affects a big area. Now from a probability of failure, it's your old pipes south of Crawfordville Road, south of the railroad tracks, and that quadrant to the southeast is where a lot of the old pipes are. That's also where a lot of the valves that don't work anymore are. One of the issues that kept coming up again and again is the staff and the water department, they can fix the main breaks and they can repair the leaks, but when the valves that they need to close to isolate that leak don't work and they have to keep going out and closing several more valves just to get the water shut off, it makes that very difficult. So that's why valve replacement is a critical part of this project. Next slide, please. Okay, so over the next five years, it's a list of projects, starting off with system-wide. All these sites have to talk to each other. The radios are reliable but not reliable enough, and when they fail, they all fail. There's no mesh like your cell phone, you know, if one cell tower goes down. So really that system needs to be replaced and replaced with the cellular system that has some fail safes in it. An arc flash study needs to take place for electrical safety. At the wells, the wellhouses and the equipment are in dire need of rehabilitation. When we go in and replace older electrical starters and those types of things, they really should be replaced with current technology, variable frequency drives that allows more monitoring, more control by the operators as they run the system. The wells in town are old and your best producers are your oldest wells. So for the town to continue to look for new well opportunities, there's not a whole lot of availability, but that is a process that needs to continue on and be diligent with. So that is a recommended part of this project as well. As the water comes into the groundwater plant, there's these aerators that they just need to be opened up and inspected to see what the internals are like, and that requires them to be taken out of service. There's a coordination piece there, but that is critical upfront. Generally, groundwater plant, you know, there's some detention tank hatches that need to be replaced, that's a safety issue. And then as Luke mentioned in the video, the high-service pumps, there's two high-service pumps that really need a wholesale rebuild and replacement as well. Moving over to the surface water plant, we mentioned the dam and the creek before, that's a high priority. The intake structure, so I was talking to Ronnie before the meeting, and historically the surface water plant goes down out of service over the winter, but it's a great resource and able to provide good water. So the longer we can get it to run over the winter, I think the more reliable your system, I know the more reliable your system will be. So putting some provisions in place to keep the components from freezing is what we're talking about in the next couple items, of putting in a structure and then doing a pilot study to make sure we understand the impacts of low-temperature surface water coming into that plant. From a chemical standpoint, there are a lot of chemicals that are used. They're all food-grade, but some of them are dangerous if they're released or there's a major accident. So there's chlorine gas that is stored at that facility and it's a potential safety concern. So looking at switching that to a much safer system as part of this project. From an operational standpoint, there are two chemicals too that also need to be looked at with respect to fluoride and phosphate in terms of improvements. We mentioned all the maintenance that the water department does. They've got dump trucks and excavators and pieces that really, those things need to be under roof so that they can be maintained and kept out of the weather. We just don't have those facilities right now at the site. So construction of a garage to allow you to keep stuff under roof is, I think, important for maximizing the lifecycle of these components, and that's why that's included. Unfortunately, because of its location, the site is sometimes subject to vandalism or theft, and some upgrades need to be made to help minimize those as much as possible at that site. For the tanks, the Metalwood tank had its last rehabilitation in 2018. It's in very good shape. Really, the 16th Street tank is the next one slated for maintenance, and that's identified here as well. To allow the department to continue to perform the maintenance and not have to hire outside contractors, they need some more equipment. So there's a couple items listed here with respect to vac trucks, valve exercising equipment to just to help them be cost-effective and do those things on their own. From a distribution system standpoint, water mains need to be replaced, valves need to be replaced. There's current regulations that have just gone into effect with respect to lead service lines, so the whole next section is talking about kind of setting up annual programs to start tackling these things, small piece by piece, but over time you'll be able to make a difference. So with respect to water main replacement, we're looking at a half a percent of the water system per year. Valves are a little bit bigger of a problem, as I talked about before, so we think a replacement program of 3% per year for that, for lead service lines of 5%, and then meters at 10% per year. So those are the recommended annual replacement programs for those distribution assets. And then finally, funds available to make sure the pieces are inspected and problems are identified before they become a big problem are very important. So tanks need to be inspected every three to five years, your wells, based on their age, probably need to be inspected on an annual basis. We wanted to make sure that not just from a project standpoint, but also from a annual inspection and maintenance program standpoint, that we identify some costs that will help the water department keep the system up to snuff. So total over that next five years for all these projects is over $13 million. And it's a lot of money, but the system needs it. And, next slide. And this is just the same information for the annual programs on a one-year basis. So I believe that is the last one on the water. If you can go to the next slide? Okay. I'm going to turn it over to Bridgette unless there's any questions from you at this point in time. Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you, Dylan.
Thanks, everybody. So going to kind of go through here to talk about the wastewater, the other side or other end of the system. So up here on the map, you can see the entire collection system, so that includes the portions of the system that flows the water from your house or your industry by gravity to the treatment plant, as well as the parts that are pumped from those same areas back down to the treatment plant. In total, there's about 71 miles worth of sewer system throughout Speedway, pipes ranging from small six-inch all the way up to large interceptors at about 72 inches in size. You could literally walk through them if you wanted to, but don't recommend it. In addition to all that piping, there's, you know, manholes throughout the entire gravity system and siphons that actually go under the creek. Speedway has four utility-owned lift stations throughout the system. You can see up there on the map that pump the flow in just areas you can achieve that by gravity. There's one wastewater treatment plant and it's rated for an average daily flow of 7.5 million gallons per day, but can handle flows up to 8.9 during peak events. Fortunately, right now, the current average flow is only about 4.5 million gallons per day, so from a flow capacity standpoint, the wastewater treatment plant is sized as needed for current day. If you can move to the next slide. So similar to Dylan already walked through, we did an asset management evaluation for the wastewater side. So this chart shows for the treatment plant and then for those four lift stations. Fortunately, you can see here even more of the assets are in the green area. There's none in the severe and only a handful in the orange and red. But this really helped us identify those assets that need to be worked on in the next five years and they're the top priority. Next slide. So just to walk you through a couple of those assets that are in immediate need, one of those is the Chapel Hill Lift Station. So this lift station's on 10th Street right by the high school, and this station on a dry day is doing all right, but when wet weather comes through, the lift station just can't keep up with those flows. And sometimes there's a sanitary sewer overflow event, so water's actually getting out. So this station needs to be upsized to account for those higher flows that it receives. In addition to that, there's an air handling unit there that doesn't work properly and sometimes that can create a health and safety condition for any worker that would need to go down there to work on the equipment in the station. So it's recommended that the station be demolished and a new station be built. Next slide. Now moving on to the wastewater treatment plant, a couple key pieces here that are in need of a little TLC. The grit building and the whole grit system is from the 1970s, has been maintained, but at a certain point, there's only so much you can do. So there's a need to replace the equipment that's there, to update it and also do some repairs on those aging tanks themselves. Next slide. The primary clarifiers are a perfect example of where the mechanisms inside the tanks are in pretty good condition. They were replaced not that long ago, they're operating as needed, but you can see from this picture that there's significant wear and tear on the concrete tanks themselves. And so part of our recommendation is that a structural inspection be done for all the tanks at the site to identify how much of this is cosmetic and how much of this could be a larger concern and needs to be addressed. Next slide. The boiler is another big item, you know, it was installed in 2020, or sorry, that would be a short turnaround, in 2000. It's 20 years old, though, and it's in need of replacement, as well as some of the pumps shown right next to it on the screen that support that unit. That's essential for being able to take, heat those digesters, help that part of the process operate the way that it needs to. Without that boiler, there's no secondary unit, so it's key to the system.
Oh, I didn't realize that.
Next slide. So now taking a look, like Dylan said, to the part of the system that you can't see, that's a that's the gravity portion of the collection system. You can see on here that from a probability of failure, there's a couple of areas marked here in red. Those are kind of areas where we know that there's INI that's inflow and infiltration, basically water getting into the sewer system that shouldn't be. So that can cause a problem because you're sending more flow to the plant that doesn't necessarily need to be there. But looking at kind of the age of the system, the older parts of town obviously have a higher probability of failure than others. Any point in the process that's already been rehabbed, we took that into consideration when evaluating how much work needed to be done. One other item that's on here I wanted to point out is the homes that are still on septic system. So there's only about 28 homes left inside of Speedway that are still on septic. And so there's an interest in trying to connect those homes to give them opportunity to connect to the rest of the system. From a consequence of failure side of things, similar to what Dylan was saying, you know, larger lines, the interceptors, anything that's going to affect a lot of people scored higher was in red. Some of the smaller lines that are only serving a couple of homes, those are still showing up as green or a little bit lower. So most of what the red on there you see is either lines that are going under 465, the creek, or those larger interceptors. Next slide, please. Last couple of slides here, just to wrap up. This is showing you all of the projects that were included in the five-year plan, taking into consideration for the rate study. I've already gone through quite a few of these, so I won't repeat myself, but just to highlight a couple that I didn't show any pictures for. There's some flow metering, similar to the water side. The meters need to be replaced so we can have the most accurate idea of what's happening and how to operate the process. There's some electrical and safety improvements at the other lift stations, not just Chapel Hill, that just need a little bit of attention. And then the last two items on here are those annual maintenance costs shown out for a five-year period. That's what needs to happen in the collection system to either rehab or replace gravity sewer lines and the manholes associated with them. And we base that off of a half a percent a year. So over 200 years, you can, in theory, could replace the whole system. If you're rehabbing, that will get you done going through the system even faster because it is typically less expensive. And then finally, we have the work at the treatment plant itself from an annual cost. That's any chemicals that are needed, maintaining the process equipment, working on the pumps and the lifts at the lift stations, anything along those lines to make sure that you're doing a little bit year after year so that when it comes around, there's less big projects. And those are for the expansions when you do need to increase for flow or new loadings and nutrients that the state puts out. And your system, the rest of the components, you don't need to worry so much about. I think we have one more slide on here, and this is just showing the collection system and treatment system, annual cost, not broken out or not multiplied by five years, like on the other slide. That is all I have. Does anyone have any questions about the wastewater side or questions for Dylan that we can help answer right now?
I will call for a motion on ordinance number 1354.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve 1390, sorry, 1354.
I have a second on the motion.
I have a second.
Okay. I'll open it up for discussion at this point. Any questions for Dylan or Bridget? Thank you for putting a lot of data out in relation, I know it's a big project. I guess the question is just, you know, it's so much for the public to consume at this point in time, you know, and I might go to Grant and ask him, you know, what's the process on this as we're talking about it here? Because we can get down in the details, but I want to make sure the public understands that this is not going to happen tonight at that point.
Yeah, so tonight is the initial presentation.
Right.
We're looking for questions and input, additional input from the council. What we plan to have is on February the 28th, a public hearing. It'll be an advertised public hearing where anyone that has concerns, issues, or questions could come and ask that evening. And then potentially that night, we would also consider approving this rate increase. Once that rate increase would be approved, we are having a ramp-up period. So the rate won't go in effect until June 1 of 2022, so this summer. And Jacob, explain one more. I think I've got it right, but correct me if I get it wrong. The rate goes in effect in June. You actually wouldn't see the bill for that until July, and it would be due and payable in August.
Correct.
So in roughly seven months, that rate would be in effect, and, you know, people would have to begin paying that. I think from the side of what we're doing with these dollars, one, we've already, a couple of council meetings ago, you approved an agreement to work on the garage, its design engineering so that we could get that constructed. We have some cash that we were going to spend on that. Once this rate is considered further and potentially approved, we'll start working systematically over the next five years on a majority of those projects, you know, identifying plant process enhancements, system, both distribution for water and collection for sewer, and identify projects every single year that will be done over the next five to knock out a lot of these problems. So it is, to me, it's a very systematic process. We've worked very hard with the engineers and our staff. This has been in process for nearly a year now. I know I've attended several meetings, and I started in July, just trying to get my head around it and understand what is needed. So after all of that is put together, our system would then be invested in and reinvested in every year. And, you know, this is something I think, if you're asking me a question about the why, I think we showed the why. I think we also showed what needs to be done and how we're going to get there. We're not just collecting this money to bank it. We're going to invest it into our system and make it better so that we can continue to provide quality water and quality wastewater treatment.
Right.
And it's a process. And rates haven't been increased since 2011, so that's 10 years. And all of us know that nothing costs the same as it did in 2010, 2011. Cost of increase, fuel, the cost of equipment, pumps, materials. All of those things have increased, and we've never had that rate increase. So we're trying to keep up with those costs as well as reinvest in that system. So the next stage, I think, tonight is for Jessica and Baker Tilly, who is our financial advisor, to go over those rates, how they were calculated and how we got. We've seen the list that was put together. Now Jessica's going to talk a little bit about those numbers. But if you have any questions.
Well, I just want to make it clear why Bridget and Dylan are here. You know, in terms of the, what you're attacking first, were those items in red, far as those assets that need to be replaced quickly, will be addressed quickly at that point in time? And then we'll systematically run down the list in far as what makes sense on both the wastewater plant and the water plant at that point in time. And I noticed that the water plant had, again, a lot more issues than the wastewater plant at that point in time. So look forward to seeing that in terms of, you know, as far as the demand of getting, can't we get everything done? But we can address the ones that cause outages and concerns from that standpoint. So any other questions for Dylan or? Thank you.
Yeah, just not so much a question, just a couple of observations that if the public's watching this live or taped, you know, there are a lot of steps that were taken here to just minimize the increases. One of those big ones is just over the last, having been a counselor, has been here a little while and was here when that last increase was put forward. It was kind of a flip-flop. At that point, we had wastewater needs that were greater and less on the water side, and it's kind of flip-flopped this point. But, you know, I know that there's a lot of preventative things that have been done over those years and to limit this increase as it's gone forward. But the Fed and the state requirements that are there that weren't necessarily there over the years and what's coming down the pike. And I think you hinted at some of that in your comments. I think it'll be interesting on the 28th to hear maybe more about, and I know our next presenter might have some of this, but in terms of where we stand in comparison to other communities and other utilities that are out there, then necessarily to speak to all those things this evening, how we'll handle, how we as a community and leaders will handle and help folks that are maybe on a more of a fixed income and how we'll do those things. But then, Bridget, you made one comment about Chapel Hill, and for a lot of residents in the town of Speedway, they don't necessarily realize that we extend our wastewater utility much further west than we do water. And that's why when we start talking about Chapel Hill and the schools on 10th Street, it's relative to Wayne Township schools, not Speedway. So for those that might be listening for the first time, are going, what are you talking about? That's what you're talking about. It goes all the way to Ben Davis and their schools in Wayne Township. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jessica, please.
Hi, I'm Jessica Lynch. I'm a director with Baker Tilly. Just to reiterate real briefly, so we're municipal advisors for the town of Speedway. I also want to commend you guys on the video that was put together. That was excellent and a great tool to help educate your customers on why these rate increases are needed. Just to elaborate a little bit on what Jacob had said in the video, I am in front of you, there are two reports, one for this wastewater and one for the water utility. There have been many versions of these reports. We've been, as people have said, working on these for a little over a year now. This is the final version of each report. So there have been a lot of different alternatives, considering all the information that Dylan and Bridget presented on the capital plan, seeing what those cost, how we can finance those, whether it be solely through rates and cash funding that or different financing options. I believe Jacob mentioned on the video, so looking at possibly a financing option for the water side, since there's a lot more capital improvements in that plan, but for the sewer side, being able to fully cash fund that capital improvement plan. But then also, so on page 15 of each report is where we bring all of that information together. So we take the capital plan information, dividing that over five years. That's kind of in the middle of that page for both the sewer and the water, the line items labeled replacements and improvements. But then we also look at all the other costs of each utility. So any of the operating costs, those periodic maintenance or annual maintenance costs that Bridget and Dylan had gone through earlier, along with a payment in lieu of taxes. So that's an allowed transfer from the utility back to your general fund of the town. And then also any outstanding debt that either utility currently has, taking all those costs that they currently have and looking at what we think those costs might be in the future, and comparing that to the revenues that are currently being brought in with the rate structure that the town has in place for each of those utilities. So we did, looked at just increasing the rates across the board, so keeping the same rate structure, the same brackets and flow rate, and just applying that same percentage to each of those rates. And based on that and the final determination with all the different alternatives that the council had looked at, that is looking to be an increase for the wastewater on that average monthly residential bill of about $4,000 at an increase of $5.03 to that average residential user. So it would go up to $26.44 on the wastewater side. And then on the water side, an increase to that average 4,000 gallon residential user of $9.27. So that average bill would be $27.01. And to reiterate, what the town also decided to do to help reduce that impact on those water rates is they are contributing $2 million of the ARP funds from the town. And the impact that that helped with that average residential rate, it reduced what that average monthly bill would have been by $2.64 to that average residential user. Are there any questions on that? And I believe one person had mentioned, but also on page four, is where you'll see the average residential graph to compare to other communities within the area. I noticed this was also in the video, but is a good tool to have as a handout at that public hearing as well on the 28th. So if there's any communities or updates you would like seen to this, you can certainly let us know, and we can add any communities or remove any based on that as well. Any questions?
That's good information.
No, I appreciate the information and the other counselors, too. We've seen this data before, as well as the other presentations, so it's not that there is an interest. We've asked a lot of questions, and we'll have more opportunity to do that on the 28th, just for those who might be watching.
Sounds good. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Got a motion in a second. Are there any further questions? Or Jacob, do you have any input?
Sure, a few things. And as Jessica said, you know, this is the product of a lot of different iterations, looking at, can we do debt here, add this, change the rate to this amount or whatever? And so this is what we've been able to get to. And also trimming some of the capital expenditures working with Welsor to try to get this down from kind of where this process started over the past year. There's a couple of things I want to mention that are maybe more kind of in the, relevant to the financial world. The engineers speak about the capital projects better than I could, but, you know, and this isn't a reason, a couple of reasons that you would do a rate increase necessarily on its own. But a couple of things that I've kind of seen, one is when we refinanced the sewer debt in 2020, which was great, and it saved us a lot, you know, over 90,000 a year in interest costs. But going through that, you have to talk to the rating agencies and get their buy-in and rating it. And this last time, they had a lot of concern around, you know, over a decade is a long time for utilities to not have any kind of increase. And so they start to question and kind of wonder why, you know, is there the willingness to do this as needs arise? And also a question of, you know, we're sitting out, you know, in Chicago or New York or wherever, and they're kind of like, we can't see these assets. You know, there's some questions, are they really reinvesting in what they need to do? And is there the willingness to increase rates as you need to? Again, not a reason necessarily to do it on its own, but that is kind of something that we're running into on the rating agency side. And then I think another good question that could come up that somebody might be wondering is, well, why don't you guys get more grant funding? And that way you can do that, and then we don't have to increase rates. And so a couple of responses on that. One, as we've mentioned, we are going to use a good portion of our ARP funds to help offset the cost of the increase. So we are using those funds. But as we've tried to go, and we do compete for those competitive grant opportunities, it's just our rates are so low that, and that has become a significant portion of how they're evaluating these competitive grants, that we're really getting kicked out of the running, even though the project we might point to is needed even more. There's, I think there's a picture in one of the presentations about our clarifier basins, and we had one where it was literally falling apart, and we had the pictures, and we're like, this is a great project for us to show that we need to, you know, upgrade these, and they're falling apart. And it was a great project, but it's just the state, and I understand why they're doing this. They say, look, these other utilities have raised rates to pay for these things. You're asking us to just, you know, keep your rates low. You guys need to raise rates, and then after you've done that, then we'll start looking at, you know, potentially funding your projects. Our rates are still going to be low after this. I'm not promising you that all of a sudden, we're going to raise rates to this amount, and now we're going to be really competitive. As you can see, even though we're raising rates, I know there's a lot of, and I appreciate Baker Tilly working with us, because there's a lot of utilities that are trying to do rate increases that held it off during the pandemic, are seeing inflation, are trying to do increases now. So we're just going to fall further down that line, which is a good thing and where we want to be. We want to be on the low end. But those are just some things that I've seen. And even going back to the rating agency presentation, we had to look really hard to find a sewer utility that was lower than us, and we technically did. Danville was technically a little bit less than us. They had actually increased their rates, so their rates were going to go up. We could say that we weren't the lowest, because rating agency doesn't want to see that you're the lowest. They want to see that your willingness to increase rates. So like I said, neither of those are reasons in and of themselves to raise rates, but there are things that we're seeing, and there are pressures that we're getting and why it's so hard to try to get grant funds to do this. And then last but not least, I just, sometimes I find myself reminding people, because we're in the billing area, my office bills for these, and we have some of these conversations. We're kind of viewed, I think, maybe as the mean utility company, or they kind of throw us in with others. And, you know, I can get that frustration, but what I try to remind folks of is, this is an asset that's owned by us. is, this is an asset that's owned by us, the community. This is, this is a municipal owned utility. These increases are not going to boost a dividend to a shareholder somewhere. These are funds that stay within the town. They're, they're really our assets and we need to invest in them to make sure that they're functioning, providing the water that we need and the sanitation services that we need and, you know, invest those here in the community. So those are some of the comments and things that I've seen. Again, not all necessarily reasons to raise rates in themselves, but just part of the picture as we kind of paint the broad picture of what's going on here.
Jacob, you, I think you, I don't know if you said this or not, but the importance of those rating agencies is on the interest that we'll pay on the notes that we will take as well as the terms to get, to get better deal, if you will. So it's really important that we have good credit in order to get the best rates.
Right. And you can see it even more directly, you can do like a credit enhancement to have a different company help ensure, the higher you get that initial rating, the less it costs to kind of boost that up to a double A plus or a double A type rating. So yeah, it has a direct impact on our cost of borrowing.
Thank you.
Great. Any other comments?
Just one final reminder, February the 28th, we will have a public hearing. It'll be noticed and advertised. We'll put some information on the website, on our various social media sites. There's, you know, this video will be up. The video we showed at the beginning of the meeting will be up. And I know that we're working on other pieces of information to help people understand the what and the why. So I know, I know this isn't easy. I know this is something that no one wants to minimize and say $15 isn't a lot. We know it impacts people. We understand that.
Right.
But I think the chances of, the consequence of not investing now is in a couple of years, it might be more than that. And I think we need to do what we can do now, make those improvements, keep our system going, and then plan for that future. And I think working with staff, I was impressed with the fact that we are looking down the road so far and trying to understand what's, what's happening and what we need to fix. That's what government should do because we're trying to minimize those costs by planning now and doing them systematically.
We don't want to make the news for the wrong things like Flint, Michigan, or Benton, Harbor, Michigan, or some other places. And we're nowhere near that.
No.
But we don't want to be anywhere near that.
Right.
I think it's also indicative of the fact that, you know, the town of Speedway has been going through reclamation of not only the homes in Speedway, a lot of homeowners have been putting money into their homes to improve their parents, improve the livability of those homes. And without water and sewer, that, that's really detrimental to the value of those homes from that standpoint. And also the fact is that, you know, we have some major stakeholders in the town that use a lot of water, Allison's, Brex Air, a lot of them, Coke, you know, absolutely. And I think it's important that we, you know, have that infrastructure. When it fails, it's too late, you know, at that point in time. And then it's going to cost even more to get something done. So I think it'd be incumbent on us to make sure that we do it and do it right the first time in a really a value added way that can bring to value to the community as a whole. Any other comments? I think I'm going to get a motion in a second on floor right now. I'm going to call for a vote on ordinance 1354. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries four zero. Okay, next item on our agenda is resolution 2022-1. Tim, you still awake?
Good evening, council. Yes, this resolution is acknowledging an agreement with IMS on property exchange along Georgetown Road at a future date when it gets worked out. So there's a chunk of land kind of in the center of Georgetown Road, call it the Diller property. It's, I don't know if I actually have the address on here. It's about 330 feet. Essentially, we, we have control of the western portion of that, which is actually under some IMS controlled area. And they have, I'm sorry, eastern side. And the Diller property, which they now have control of through a land lease on the eastern side, kind of falls into what we're looking at in a long-term plan for a future linear park. So this agreement would essentially swap equal land on the east side for the west side. So the town would acquire what they'd need eventually on the west side once that's determined and they would have the property that's underneath where they need to have control on the east side.
And this resolution really gives my office the authority to go ahead and make that swap. So we'll work with Bob and IMS' counsel to get those documents drafted up, set a closing, get that completed and recorded so that we can move ahead with this process.
So in terms of value of that swap, is it equal value at that point or equal square footage?
Yeah, it's indicated to be equal, whatever the percentage property is on the east side will equal the west side for our needs as well.
Okay, I'll call for a motion on resolution 2022-1.
Mr. President, I make a motion. We approve 2022-1 as presented.
I have a second. You got a motion in a second. Open up a discussion. Is there any discussion? Any more questions for Tim?
No.
Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of resolution 2022-1 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries four zero. Okay, next item on the list is resolution 2022-2, resolution approving a COVID response. And I think at this point in time, we got to go to table this one. Next is the approval of the police union contract grant.
Yes, so in your packets is included the updated revised copy of a one-year contract with our police department. This contract runs from January 1 of 2022 through December 31, 2022. Obviously, you're asking, well, it's 10 days in. We've been working on this, trying to get it finalized, and finally we're able to. Just really quickly, I'm going to take you through the major changes. On page two, we identify future negotiations will start no later than March 15 of 2022. That's important because we want to make sure we get this done and accomplished sometime around the budget process so that we understand that impact and can plan better for that. On page, sorry. On page eight, the, we agreed to an additional three PTO days for the officers. That will give them a total of 12 from nine. Those days can be used for doctor's appointment, personal time off, staying home with children from school, or a vacation time off from work. They're more flexible. So we did provide that. On page 10, we agreed to a 2% pay increase for, for the officers. That table in the middle of the page has been calculated, doubled and triple checked to make sure that those amounts are correct. On page 11, we have changed all holidays to floating holidays for the police department. They had six previously. They requested that all of their holidays be put into that floating holiday status. And you might ask, well, why did they want to do that? Flexibility. I think the, the good thing for the town in this regard is we no longer will pay that overtime for holiday, holiday pay. So some of those parts have been removed from the agreement. The other one is the post-employment health plan where police department can cash in unused PTO days above and beyond their max. We reduced that from 96 hours, which is what it used to be, down to 72 hours. And that was agreed to by the union. So with that, those are the four or five major changes to the agreement. This agreement is ready for approval, has been voted on by the police union. In fact, I believe it was 30, 30 to nothing as far as approval. So I believe that we worked hard to work with them and assist them and, once again, trying to retain our best assets so that we can continue doing what we do here in the town of Speedway. I'll take any questions at this point, but we are looking for a motion to approve this contract.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the police union agreement as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Open up for a discussion. You have any questions to Grant or Assistant Chief Chuck?
I'm sorry.
So if there's any questions, I.
We'll ask you, yeah.
No questions, just a comment, having worked on this, this committee with Grant and Gary Pedego, appreciate the work that the, those that represented the police department put in as well. It was, it was actually very good conversation the whole way and just look, trying to do what's best for both our officers and people in the department as well as the town. So thank you to everyone that participated.
Any additional comments, questions? Hearing none.
What he said.
I call for a vote. All those in favor of the police union contract as presented by Grant signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries four zero. Okay, next is approval of a request from the Marion County Election Board to identify Speedway Municipal Center complex as a voting center for the 2022 primary and general election. Grant?
Previously, we held polling locations at former Town Hall on Lynn Hurst. We've moved. That building is not being used by the town currently. We leased that out to St. Chris. We've discussed with them, they would like to still have a polling place here in Speedway at our municipal facility. So they sent us this agreement to consider and approve. They are coming out actually tomorrow, if you approve this agreement, to walk through the site, put a plan together and identify where they want to have their polling places. If you remember, Town Hall will be closed that day, or SMC will be closed that day as we have that day off for our employees. They also will pay us for the use of that facility and reimburse certain costs. We will have a further agreement once they make sure that they're okay with everything and we'll bring that to the council when necessary. So if you have any questions, please let me know, but we do recommend approval of this.
Okay, do I have a motion for the approval?
Yeah, I'll certainly make the motion that we approve this request from the Marion County Election Board.
Second.
You got a motion in a second. Open it up for questions. Grant, are they going to, are they going to provide any as far as direction? Are they, I take it that they want to, are they going to have it down here in our chambers?
We'll talk about that tomorrow. I'm not exactly sure where they want to do it, but we will discuss with them. They'll have signage.
Okay.
We'll help them as well to make it work out.
Okay. Any other questions?
So do we know if they are wanting to change any of the other locations in our town?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. And how about the re-presincting? What impact? Do you have any idea on that?
I do not. I can ask them that tomorrow when they're here.
Okay.
Okay.
But I think what they were doing was simply trying to replace a lost polling place.
Right.
A new one. So.
And I think that the other sites, the total sites would be at Speedway Junior High here at the municipal center, the high school, and then I believe John Knox Church was actually just outside of Speedway, but it's considered, well, the precincts that are there typically are from the Meadowwood area. So I think those are the four remaining.
St. Chris is not on that list?
No. And haven't been for at least a couple of years. Two elections, yeah.
Yeah. Good.
I'll ask them about that tomorrow.
If there's no other questions, I can call for a vote. All those in favor of a motion to approve the request from the Marion County Election Board as the SMC complex as a voting center signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries four zero. Next is approval of production and broadcast consent agreement for the sports coverage with ISC. Grant, you want to go over that?
Yes, just very briefly, we were, actually Brian Pierce, our manager, approached Greg Rakestraw with PS, I'm sorry, ISC Sports Network. They are proposing to broadcast 13 basketball games with Speedway High School and then sell ad revenue for those broadcasts. Any money that they make, they will split 50/50 with the, with the town and Speedway TV. We think it's an important step to try to recover some of those costs that we've lost over the years from some of our licensing fees going down. So I appreciate Brian looking into this. Bob has reviewed this agreement, has no issues, had, made a couple minor changes, but we recommend approval and we'll move forward with this for this year if the council's amenable to that. I'll answer any questions you might have.
Do I have a motion for the approval of the agreement broadcast consent?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the production broadcasting consent as presented.
I second.
You got a motion in a second. I'll open it up for any other discussion.
Have they done this for other towns?
I believe they have. I don't know that I can tell you which towns or communities they've done it for.
Did they provide, Brian, like an estimate of a dollar amount of what they anticipate or?
I don't think they, they know just because each community will be, will be different.
Sure.
But I would hope we would get some type of accounting.
Oh yeah, absolutely. There's actually a process laid out where they have to provide the invoice from the sales and we then get 50% of that. It's, it's pretty clear how it, how it has to be done. So if this doesn't work, no skin off our back, we'll move on to something else, but we felt like this might be a good opportunity.
Yeah, sure. Any other questions? That hearing, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the production broadcasting consent agreement for the sports coverage with ISC Sports Network, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries four zero. Next is approval of claims and utility adjustments. Our town clerk, Treasure.
Thank you, Mr. President. Claims presented to you for your review are those made from December 10th through January 7th, and I'll take any questions. Would appreciate your approval.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the claims as presented.
Second.
You got a motion and a second. Open it up for any questions? Hearing none, and call for a vote for the approval of the claims. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries four zero. Next is the utility adjustments.
I know utility adjustments this evening.
Way to go.
I didn't see any.
Is that a first?
No.
Report from the Department Supervisors, Tim Grob.
Just remind Mr. Grob that it's 8:28.
I thought that rate presentation was long, just, actually pretty short. Everything's going pretty smooth. Projects are on track, 1300 block. I've had some people say it looks like they're going kind of slow, but there's actually weekly construction meetings that are on target with their schedule. Things are progressing fine there. Infrastructure works happening out at the hotel at Founder's Square. Freddie's is moving along, they'll kind of transition into more of the inside work there. Earlier this evening, the rezone was approved for valvaling out of Founder's Square, so they'll go through their ILP process and start on that project this year. And then the senior living facility also is working through all the different steps for approvals to get their permitting going, hopefully by, I think they prefer to be in February. I think it'll be a little bit later than that, but we're going through all those processes. processes, so things are moving smoothly. Quick update, we haven't talked a lot about the Will Shaw, but everything is progressing as we kind of anticipated. As we've mentioned many times, a very complicated process, a lot of legal documents and negotiations that have to happen, but we continue to have weekly meetings with Hotel Equities. They are very committed, they are financially committed to the project, and they have slowly been working through their JV agreements, partnership agreements, and are progressing exactly how they outlined at the beginning. They're still on track for financing sometime here in February. They have multiple letters of intent from financing groups, so they're going over those, finding the right selection for the project. Still have several agreements. If all, everything kind of shakes out right, we'll get all those JV agreements signed by early February. They'll get their financing in place sometime in February and we'll sign, we'll consider all of our agreements, which would assign the project over to them, as well as do an amendment to our economic development agreement sometime in February, which should line everything up for them to start in the spring as planned. So at this point, everything is on track, everything is running smooth. Not a lot to report specifically, but we've been pleased with the progress at this point. Happy to answer any questions.
I guess the weather has really helped you out, too.
Yeah, we've been able to work so far through winter conditions with little to no problems.
Yeah.
Little bit slower the last few days with the 20 degrees.
Yeah. Any other questions for Tim? Thank you.
Thank you.
Police Chief Upchurch?
Good evening, Council. As you know, we've already covered Chief Campbell and his retirement. On January the 7th, we also had a resignation from Sarah Edie, our Director of Administrative Services. She's resigned to pursue a different career. As you know, Sarah oversaw our Kalia, the Communications Division, and many other things, including payroll. So we're in the process of reassigning a Communications Director, and we are also working on payroll. We're working to have someone take that. Right now, we're gonna have Paulette, she's been trained by Sarah to, to take over our payroll. I've done payroll, so I'll be assisting Paulette also. So also, as you know, late last year, we had in the news, and there was quite a discussion about arrestee transport and detention services that would no longer be provided by the Marion County Sheriff's Department. We met with the sheriff just before Christmas, and there was a concession on that. They will now transport our violent felony outright arrests and the warrant arrests that fall within those violent felonies for on-duty arrests. They will also transport our resistors, those that are risk, resist arrest, and prisoners that have seriously soiled or have bodily fluids that can come in contact with the officer or the patrol car. So at this point, in terms to mitigate that, our staffing through January and February, we average about four to five officers per shift, so we are looking and reviewing our staffing and alternate options in the future. We don't normally have a lot of vacations in January and February, so our staffing is fairly adequate during that time. We are currently equipping two of our older patrol cars with protective barriers in case the officers have to actually transport a resister. And we're currently tracking all the prisoner transports to the Marion County Jail, soon to be the Criminal Justice Center, and to any transports that go to the hospital to determine the amount of time the officer's gonna be out of service. We also have been advised by the Sheriff's Department that if a single officer actually transports a prisoner, they will be given priority if there's a wagon in front of them with multiple prisoners, so the officer can be returned to service as soon as possible. So, and our officers are to consider issuing summones in lieu of arrests, so that for traffic misdemeanors and low-level felonies, they're not taken out of service. The offender could be, if they meet the proper criteria, a summons arrest, so they're not actually taken to jail and the transport service will not be needed. So in terms of the hospital and the detention center, since that is no longer going to be in service, we actually, as Speedway Police Department, we send very few offenders to the hospital, and we've been assured by the Sheriff's Department that most generally those that do go to the hospital just are not admitted. They're there for a short period of time, usually within an hour or two, there's a determination made, they may be sutured or they may be treated, and then they can be taken to the hospital, I mean, to the Marion County Jail. So if offender is going to be admitted and they're violent, the Marion County Sheriff's Department has agreed that they will assign an officer or a deputy to go and guard the prisoner while they are at the hospital. And we are currently maintaining and communicating with the other excluded cities and our point of contact with the Sheriff's Department to mitigate this as much as possible. So also, we're going to begin a lateral entry process to fill our open positions within the department that we hope to begin next week. So that is what I have, if anyone has any questions.
That's a lot. I got one question for you.
Yes.
You know, you might just inform the public of what, you know, caused the sheriff to react the way he did in relationship?
Our understanding is that the funding, the way it was explained to us by the Sheriff's Department, the funding that the sheriff received was cut this year, and there had to be a decision made in terms of whether or not those services, security services we provided at the city-county building, or whether the continuation of the transport and detention services would occur. And it was decided that the city-county building would continue and the transportation services would not. And the sheriff is, has informed us that he's down in staff by 100 deputies, and he just doesn't have the deputies or the funding to keep the transportation services going as in the past, so.
And that service was provided for, what, 15 years?
Yes, yes.
At that point in time?
It began approximately 15 years ago, yes.
And we're talking about the city-county council?
Yes.
That changed the funding in relationship to the allocation amount to the sheriff at that point in time?
Correct.
Okay.
I would add, at the recommendation of the mayor and his controller, that budget that was proposed to the city-county council that was approved by, that collective group, it's really what's putting not just Speedway, but Lawrence, Beechgrove, Southport, other police departments in this county. I think there's something like 50-plus policing agencies in the county that are potentially impacted by this.
Yes.
And to Vince's point a moment ago, 15 years ago, when the agreement was put together that the sheriff, Sheriff's Department and IPD and Indianapolis Police Department were combined into Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department, this service was one of the negotiating factors that excluded cities kind of received out of those negotiations, and now the city and the county are balking on their responsibility.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I appreciate you, you know, making sure that, you know, we got adequate coverage from that standpoint. Keep tracking that information and, you know, keep council apprised on where we're at. And make sure that, you know, if you're running into, you know, personnel issues that are covered. So how are you covering, I mean, typically, right now, what you've seen of an officer being pulled off of duty to run somebody down there?
In the past week, we have only transported three prisoners ourself, so we really don't have a gauge in terms of, you're probably looking at 45 minutes to an hour if an officer runs a prisoner. It depends on which shift. Late shift is gonna go much quicker.
Right.
Because there's no traffic, and afternoon shift with the construction and trying to get to, right now, they're going to the Marion County Jail. The new Criminal Justice Center is gonna open very quickly, probably within the next week. So it's gonna be a little further. It's 7.5 miles from town from here to the Criminal Justice Center. So it's gonna depend on the shift and...
Learning curve.
Just, yes, and we're gonna track those, and we'll get a much better idea in terms of what we're losing in terms of officers on the street, and we'll mitigate that as much as we can.
Okay.
So.
Anything else?
Do you have a plan for the month of May? Because I feel that that's probably your busiest.
We will begin race meetings the first of February, and I'm sure that's gonna be a hot topic at the race meetings, so, yes.
One other thing, just for the public, with Chief Campbell retiring, you as Deputy Chief become the, took over his responsibilities, but has that been formalized?
That was formalized today. I am the interim chief, yes, so.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you.
We're sure you do a fine job, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else?
We're good.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Fire Chief Bob Fishburne.
Thank you, and I know it's been a long meeting, I've got a few things also. Fire Department is going to be also starting a lateral process sometime, maybe even by the end of this week, that'll run through February, allows us to maybe not lose guys to an academy and that sort of thing. We allow people that are in the 77 per fund to laterally transfer, they're already firefighter one and two a lot of times, so that's gonna be our next process instead of a full-blown everybody apply. So this month, at the end of the month, we will be doing our blood draws, and then in February, everyone will get their annual physicals to certify us for our breathing apparatus and all of those. There was a great result that, that happened. I want to commend firefighter Kyle Freeman, Michael Boe, Jeremy Bowerly, and Eric Emerson Jr. We had a run back in December, and I can't share all of it with you, but I can share you a little bit, and it was a great outcome. We followed up to make sure I wouldn't share something that wasn't a good outcome, but the latter ran on an unconscious person, unresponsive. They, they were advised by the defibrillator to defibrillate, they did that once, they did not get the patient back, they did that again and got the patient back, began CPR, handed over to Medic 85 from Wayne Township, and that patient has had recovery. So I just want to commend them on that. Our guys do great stuff all the time, but saving a life is kind of a big thing, and the officer had written them accommodation for it, so wanted to thank them. Parker Adams wanted to be here tonight, I'm kind of glad he's not, because he really just did want to say thank you for the time put into the contract. He's got a sick child and wife, so he couldn't be here. But along those lines, sometimes I don't think Jacob's Office gets enough credit for a first-of-the-year payroll, with all the changes of pay raises, longevity, all of that. The Fire Department had one, one thing, and it was a minor error on a paycheck. I want to commend, you know, Angie and Sharon and you, because I know sometimes you hear it, but a lot of times pay, we will hear about it, too, and I know that's not easy with all of the data that gets touched in that process, so really appreciate it. I was able to give Norm Berry a challenge coin from the, from the Fire Department, which just means if he has it with him, I have to buy him a beer, and I'm glad to do that because Norm has, has given this town 30 years. I've been here 32, and I've gotten a no norm, and we've had a lot of fun. The jokes for that position write themselves, just by the nature of the work, but I want to thank him for his 30 years. And I also want to thank Jim Campbell. He won't get away from me so easy, I'll tie him down at some point. We have a gift to give him, and it is in the, it is in the nature of our two professions. He's always wanted to be a firefighter anyway, so I've got him a really nice fire chief's helmet. And so, you know, he's not gonna get out of receiving that from me. I've had it, I've had it for a while.
We will need a picture of it.
Oh, oh, yeah, there will be. He might not be in it, but the helmet will be, so.
All right.
And lastly, I want to thank Prax Air. I've got some videos or some, yeah, thank you. So this is the new battery-operated extrication equipment that we have been able to purchase partly out of last year's budget and also through a $10,000 gift from Prax Air.
Wow.
And then we're covering some of that out of our budget this year. This is state-of-the-art stuff made by Hamatro, who actually sponsors the Indy Racing League, and I asked Brian to get that. Now, one of the things that's significant, and this, I know Cheryl doesn't like to take a lot of credit, but we would have never gotten this $10,000 gift had Cheryl not been diligent in going through unanswered emails from Prax Air. And, you know, she, she got on board, it took a little bit of time. There was an email sent in May asking for, you know, something maybe the Fire Department could, could use. As she did not delete all of those and sifted through, she forwarded that email to us in November, and Prax Air was still gracious enough to work with us to get us that money. Mike Bass has been with Prax Air for 50 years, and, I mean, literally 50 years. And I want to commend Cheryl. It would have been easy just to hit delete and hit delete and hit delete, and I'm not casting shade on anyone, I just know that that had not been taken care of, and if we hadn't had somebody diligent doing that, we would have missed out on $10,000. So I want to, want to thank you, Cheryl. I know you feel like you were just doing your job, but I wanted you guys to know what we would have missed out on, so that, that's all I have, if you guys don't have any questions.
Okay.
I don't have any questions, I really, you know, the council appreciates Prax Air stepping up and...
Oh, yeah.
That's fantastic to have organization like that, you know, basically help the community out.
Yeah, I called them on the 5th and apologized for us not getting back with them, kind of explained that situation. The Vice President of Finance emailed me, I sent her our information, and they were able to cover 25% of the cost of that equipment. We had also had some money left over in our equipment fund from the previous year, so we'll have that paid for, we've ordered it. Their supply chain isn't too backed up, but our guys, our, our equipment we've maintained, but these are, these are great tools. No hydraulic lines running to them, battery operated, I mean, and we got demo, we demoed, we looked at things, and this is what the guys wanted, so I want to put things in their hands that are gonna help the citizens. But we pushed out on our social media stuff. Prax Air did not want a big presentation here, but we took a picture receiving the check and put that out on our social media back in late November, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for hanging in there.
Yep. Happy New Year to everybody.
You, too.
First of all, I have two Parks Board members that are leaving, Denny Pelley and Trent Theobald. I wanted to thank both of them for their service, they've been great and I'm gonna miss them. But on that note, I want to welcome Terry Sedam and Jim Merly as our new Parks Board members. They will be joining Crystal DeValle, Mark Chastain, and then Jenny Davis, who is also reappointed, so I'm excited to work with them this year. Our basketball league this winter has been going very well, and this program is always supposed to have been parent-run. It hasn't been so much parent-run the past few years, but this year it has been, and I want to give special thanks to Brian Dinwiddie and Steve Bishop for stepping up and running the league. It's been going very well this year. I also want to thank Brian Avery, the Athletic Director at the schools, the school town of Speedway, and then the parent volunteers that have put so much work into it to make this such a good season. I also wanted to bring up Light the Night and Jolly Jubilee, our holiday events that we had this year. I know a lot of people are always talking about Main Street getting lit up and decorated, and it was exciting last year that the town purchased the large snowman statues, which had been on display for two years. And then the Lions Club this year added some lights around some of the light poles. the Lions Club this year added some lights around some of the light poles, so that was a nice addition as well. And hopefully, we can continue to add to it every year. I want the public to know what's involved in putting on these events. There are a lot of volunteers needed to do this. The, we have event meetings leading up to it. Afterwards, we have setup during the event. We need volunteers. Tear down. We have tents that go up, fencing, stage and risers, sound equipment, coordination with the North Pole, you know, we got to get Santa there, public safety, the road closures, the barricades. So, I want to give a special thanks to all those people that have helped out, and the Speedway Parks personnel helping me get all the blowups and equipment from the wastewater shed to DeLara, as well as the park, the Speedway Fire Department who helped transport Santa to the Jolly Jubilee at Meadowwood Park, Speedway Police Department who helped close the road closure on Main Street and are there for safety, our administration personnel, especially Cheryl and Edder, who volunteered their time to help with these events, Speedway Arts Council with a special shout-out to Katie Myers, who was very instrumental in the meetings and ideas that helped us out, resident and newest Parks Board member Terry Sedam and her husband Danny. Terry volunteers for everything with the parks, and they volunteered their trailer for us to get everything from DeLara when we tore down. And we had, I don't know, 20-some people helped us tear down, and we got it done quickly. It was, it was amazing. Speedway Lions Club members, too many to name. There was, I don't know, over 20, maybe 30 Lions Club members there. Bob Lehman was there, Speedway High School Choir under the direction of Amy Mole, and Speedway Junior High Choir under the direction of Amy Cronin. Special shout-out to Mr. Tom Hart, who donated his sound equipment, his stage, his fencing, and all of his time to take care of that for both events. Speedway Library for partnering with the parks to install the story walk, and then all the nonprofit and civic groups that participated with these activities. So, it's a lot involved in that, and I'd like to reach out to the community to say, we could use more help. So, this coming year, if anybody's interested, please contact me, get on a list, and come help us out. It's a lot of fun, and it's great to see all this stuff offered to the community. I also want to mention DNR, Division of Forestry, donates tree seedlings to each member of the Indiana General Assembly to distribute to public service organizations in their district. These organizations offer the seedlings to interested community members at no charge. This program impresses upon the need to plant trees for the future. Trees are vital for reforestation, erosion control, windbreaks, wildlife habitats, and much more. Senator Young's office has graciously chosen Speedway Parks to participate in this program once again. We will be receiving a limited number of scarlet oak tree seedlings and hazelnut tree seedlings. So, if any community member's interested in receiving one of those, or more than one, please email me at tsmith@speedwayin.gov, and I'll put you on a list and notify you when they are received this spring, probably in March or April. So, it's exciting to have that program back, and that's all I have.
Well, Tammy, I want to thank you for the hard work that you've been doing. Those events that you mentioned and the cooperation in which, you know, the number of people that came together to pull them off, as well, were that, you know, just hearing the comments, parents with young children there at the event saying that, you know, this is some of the reasons why they moved to Speedway, and that sense of community that a lot of small towns lack, because it takes a lot of effort to bring these events off. And, but I think it's well worth it for the public and the town to build that sense of community. And again, thank you very much for that
You're welcome. I enjoy it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Tammy.
Rodney Smith. Public Works. So, you had the short straw this time?
I did.
Great meeting for a spark.
Good evening to everyone. Business as usual at the wastewater plant. Plant's running well. They treated 120 million gallons of water. Was sent out to Big Eagle Creek in the month of December. And the Street Department is in winter operations, working weather events. And this was the last week for Christmas tree pickup. And the water plant is running on the groundwater plant now. We closed the service plant down at the end of the month for the year. We'll fire that, we'll put that back in operation in March. And we treated 62 million gallons of water for the month of December. And that's all I have for you.
You guys have been busy.
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely. Anybody have any questions for?
No. Thanks for all you're doing.
Yeah, and I appreciate you coming up here tonight to explain to the public, you know, everything that you get involved with. And you guys are doing a great job, Street Department, Water Department, all the, all the heads and employees there, especially with COVID back in there, so from that standpoint.
Awesome. Awesome.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now for the Town Manager Report. Grant?
I'm going to forego any comments. I think I've spoken enough for this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Reports from the Councilman, Gary Pettigo.
I'll make mine very short, just to the public, stay safe. Those that have not yet gotten the vaccination, please consider doing so. Hopefully, we'll all get through this COVID thing together and put it, put it mostly to bed by the time this year is over. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilor. Any link?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Well, sir, Gary Ricks?
No additional comments, just.
Okay, all right. Report, I'd like to just, you know, 2021 was a very challenging year in itself. Just thought we were coming out of COVID, and this year, it looks like we have our, our new COVID replacement. Again, it's challenging all the departments. It's challenging this town, and I think it puts a lot of stress on all the employees, citizens. But I appreciate, you know, the help that the town has been giving us, and also the amount of work that a lot of employees have put together to make town a Speedway, a special place. And I look forward to 2022 and the improvements that we're going to make around town to really drive home the point that we are going to make Speedway a better place than what it was in, at the end of '21. So, thank you very much. That's all I've got for this evening. Can I call for a German? It is 8:58.